I call this meeting to order. Sheila, can we take role call, please?
Mr. Lansman?
Here.
Mr. Young? Mr. Furman gave notice that he's most likely not being able to come. Dr. Giles also gave notice that she couldn't make it. Pastor Jones? Ms. Woodruff also gave notice. Dr. Hans also gave notice. Ms. Newman? Ms. Root?
Here.
Ms. May is not able to attend. And Mr. Torres also indicated no on the attendance thing. And Mr. Cowan also gave notice. But I- he might be on virtually, but he's not able to participate in the meeting. Um, so, we have quorum of the Finance Committee.
Oh, there's Ms. Newman.
Oh, Ms. Newman's here. That's still no quorum with two out of six.
Okay.
So, we have no quorum on the policy.
Mm-hmm.
And we have quorum on the finance. So, I don't know if you just want to defer the agenda to the Finance Committee? And we can, um, with the agenda, we can just defer those motions to, uh, take your recommendation. You want to defer those motion- or those topics to the General Board meeting?
The policy topics, correct?
Correct.
Yes, let's do that.
Okay.
Okay, do we have anyone here in the building for public comment? You can come on up.
Hi, Fred Cummings, President of Lance from Millie Hill of Oakton County. I see we have a somewhat light turnout, so I'll expect that I get you guys charged up to tell everybody else. And maybe I'll do this again. This is a map of the CCPHCs in the state. They also seem to be clustered towards the southern part of the state. Well, CCHB is a Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic. And this was a program that was basically created by Debbie Stavina to, uh, reach out to people who need help with behavioral health issues in the community. And its role is to receive everybody who needs help. And find them a place to go, to get help. Now, you can see by the stars, there's one in Macomb County, and that is Macomb CMH. There's two stars in Oakland County. That's not Oakland CMH. That is CNS and Easterfields. There's something wrong with that. Because we're talking about responsibility for serving the county. And neither of them are really responsible for serving the county. They're responsible for serving for the most part, the people that you refer to them. So, who's serving the county? In the case of CCPHCs. I've heard some- somewhere referenced, and maybe it was Dana. So, will we refer them to the CCPHCs? Well, that's not quite good enough. Also, the stars on here are, uh, you can't tell by the code here. I think some are green and some are yellow. You can't tell the difference. If you get it, uh, get this on the NVHHS website, you can see the colors. But, uh, a number of these were added in Oc- in October of 23. OCHN was not one of those. Should have been. He's been around for a while. He should have been on the ball. He should have been on the ball the first time. Because this is something you be- have- need to be in charge of to serve the community. Not only because you need to be sure that everybody's serving, getting served in the community, but because you need to know what's going on with that service. This is where people are coming who don't come to you. Because they're in crisis, basically, for the most part, even though they should be serving people who aren't just in crisis. But it's me- these are being provided by two of your service providers. Well, why is that? Basically, the reason is they're positioning themselves for being in business when a community mental health gets privatized. We had that problem a few years ago. Big campaign, we were going to turn over everything over to the insurance companies. Everybody got excited about that. Finally got killed. Governor Whitman caroled it. It's going to be back. It's not gone away. Insurance companies are not done trying to take this over. There's a lot of money in it. And there's more money in it when it's privatized, because they'll make sure there's more money for them and less money for the people that need to be served. Not only that, they don't really care about the community. All they care about is the money and the people that are required to serve. Your job is the community to be served. And you need to be out there with a CCPHC to do that job. If nothing else, you need to take over the CCHBs or control of CCPHCs of these two providers who are serving your county.
It's been past three minutes, Mr. Cummings.
Let me see if I got all my points here. I think you got plenty of time. So, the other point about this is this is where you find out who's really needed, needing services in this county. Assuming CCPHCs are doing their job and people are getting attention to this. That's where you find out what the real need is. We aren't finding that out. The department doesn't want to know. Because it might cost more money. The legislature doesn't know because the department doesn't tell them. Somebody's got to tell them. You need to start paying attention to what CCHBs you've got are doing, who they're turning away, where they're turning people who think they need services, and are they getting services? That should be your job. You need to tap into that. So, let's get on the ball and try to serve the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll be back.
Can you shut the mic off, please? Can you shut the mic off?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Do we have any online comments?
We do. Saleem, you can go ahead and unmute your mic.
Yes, thank you. Yep. Good evening. My name is Saleem Kareem. I'm the Program Supervisor at New Gateways, a community skill-building program in Waterford. You may remember me from making previous comments about these same issues. Unfortunately, the issues have still not been addressed. OCHN continues to provide insufficient rates to their vocational providers, which has led to the recent closures of the Walt Lake Life Skills Program, Pontiac Life Focus Program, and Starting Point Programs. They've all closed. Approximately 200 individuals with developmental disabilities have now been left without crucial services and are now on wait lists. This is shameful. It is known that the surrounding PIHP, PIHPs are paying higher rates for these services than what Oakland County is to their providers. And we are certainly not a poor county compared to any of them. The loss of day programs greatly harms the lives of vulnerable individuals as they have lost services that gave them the opportunity to live healthier, happier lives. They also now face a much bigger risk of neglecting abuse without the protection day programs provide. If OCHN continues to provide insufficient rates, more of the most vulnerable people in our county will suffer from losing the services they depend on, and that is inexcusable. Furthermore, our DSPs are not just caregivers. They are teachers, advocates, and companions to those who depend on them. Their state government has already decided that DSPs deserve an 85 cent wage increase. Going against what our elected representatives have decided is also inexcusable. I urge you now to please take action and reevaluate the decision and pass along the additional 85 cent increase to our DSPs. Again, surrounding PIHPs are paying higher rates for these services than OCHN. And we are not a poor county compared to them. Not at all. Yet, they are not having these issues. And they also already passed along the 85 cent wage increase. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other online comments? If you are online and wish to speak to public comment, please raise your hand at this time. All right, that concludes our public comment section. Can we go ahead and have approval of the agenda?
Move for approval.
Um, can we amend the agenda to remove the policy topics?
Yes.
I thought we already did that.
Oh, what, just in the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we have our January financial update.
Good evening. Cheryl Johnson, CFO. Okay, the first slide here are our payments from NVHHS for the first four months of the year. And in total, revenue is dropping approximately $400,000 per month. And we're seeing a decrease in each of the categories listed there. Next slide, please. The eligibles, um, for the same first four months are going down approximately $6,000 per month on average. And as you can see, each of the categories is also decreasing there. Okay, looking at our assets compared to last year, our cash investments are up about $7 million, which is basically timing of when we have received payments. Receivables have gone down about $1.5 million, which is timing of collections. Both of those are just timing differences. Other assets remain about the same, and capital assets are about the same also. Liabilities, our accounts receivable have gone up about $9 million. Again, that's basically just timing between when things are getting paid. The other categories are all about what they were last year. Okay, net position. The increase in total assets, again, is basically the same increase in cash I spoke about previously. The increase in liabilities is the payable amount that I spoke to previously. And net position has gone down about $2 million. Which, again, is due to the reductions that we're seeing in the revenue coming in. Okay, our revenue comparison, we have about $8 million more than we did last year in Medicaid revenue. But that diff- that difference is decreasing each month. So, we do expect that to continue to go down. Expenses, uh, the expenses that we're seeing in the provider network have gone up about $11 million. We can- we expect that to continue to go up, hopefully not quite at that same rate. Administration and our other expenses are about the same as they were last year. Okay, total revenue has gone up about $7 million, while total expenses have gone up about $11 million. So, we are showing a loss for the first four months of approximately $2.3 million. Okay, our top 15 providers remains the same as it has in prior months. And with that, are there any questions? Yes.
Any questions from the committee first? Go ahead, John.
So, um, the $2.3 million loss, that's cumulative year-to-date from October through January 31st.
Through January.
Correct. Is that, and I think based on what I heard, that's accelerating as each month is going on.
Correct.
Okay, um, which is what I thought. I just want to make sure I heard you correctly, which-
Yes.
Um, so, within the, well, the earlier slides, uh, the different components within, uh, the Medicaid eligibles, I mean, it looks like, I think I got my color codes here right, is that the, um, HSW is going down kind of the, um, the fastest. Okay, just want to make sure I'm reading all of this correctly.
The- the change in- in DABs is the slowest, but there is still a decrease there.
Yeah, whi- which kind of, as an overall standpoint, is concerning because those individuals are permanently affected. And it's, I said this before, that this is where the lobbyists and this is where everybody needs to go to Lansing and say, "Somebody who's disabled in 19 and 20 is still disabled in 24, even if they didn't do their paperwork correctly."
And our belief is that a lot of the people who are getting redetermined are being put into the wrong category, which is what's causing that drop.
Yeah, yeah. I- I think that's fair, but there's- so, thanks for clarifying. Um, and also, I think there's homework for our lobbyists to do, short-term. Thank you.
Um, I'm sorry. From what you're telling me, um, is we're on a trajectory to continue the loss.
Correct.
Um, and I looked at, you know, I know you have no control over the income, so you got to manage the expenses. And I- the question I have in relation to, and- and our income comes by way of, not only the state giving, but by the performance of our contractors. Is that correct?
The revenue?
Their perfor- the contractors that we have out there that are registering the people for Medicaid and all of that to make sure that they're properly treated and that the dollars come in from them. Am I correct or no?
Our- our, you want me to take it?
Go ahead, Derek.
No, I'm sorry. Um, our income is really through our contract with the state, and it's based on historicals, and it's looking at the number of eligibles. So, we get paid based on eligibles. The issue becomes when you look at the type of category that they're placed in. So, when you have a higher number of people who are DABs, who are disabled, Asian, blind, then that monthly rate is higher. It's compared to like having 350 compared to somebody who's categorized in a TANF, which is about $50 a month. So, give or take. And I did have a handout. I forgot to bring it, but, um, so, it depends on that. And so, if the- we're trending down and the categories are miscategorization of people, it impacts our revenue. So, although we start off with a budget from the state, it still is about the rates set by the state. It's about the number of eligibles, and then it's about the number of people served who were able to bill Medicaid for.
And- and- and those people are served through our contractors?
Yes.
Okay. Who either put them in the right category, or maybe they don't get in the right category.
No. It's- it's the Department of Human Services who- who reviews the application. You know, it's interesting. So, we're hearing a lot about some of the success, and I'll put that in quotes, of, um, redetermination in terms of numbers. But if you look in the detail, the detail tells another story. Because like Mr. Young is saying, if you have somebody who is a DAB, right, for many, many, many years, they should have continued on. And what they're finding is that people are being, uh, put in the wrong category. They even have something called Family Plan or Family First, which is really a family planning benefit. And what we found the other day is we were looking at our list, um, we found about 1,000 people that included men over the age of 50. So, there are a lot of reasons why you wouldn't think that someone with that demographic would be on a family plan. So, there's errors in maybe the application process, data entry, maybe they're automatically re-enrolling people. But we, you're right, we have to advocate to make sure that people are being put in the right categories. But often, they don't know. So, it's up to the providers and it's up to us to keep running log on how this is coming out.
And- and part of that, I'm- I'm trying to understand in relation to what my fellow board member is saying that we need to lobby the state for more dollars. Um, and lobbying really works well in numbers.
Yes.
And because this is impacting us, it's impacting our providers.
Yes.
Okay? And so, I'm just wondering if we need to say to them, hey, we're all in the same boat together. Unless there's a happy camper along that, in- on these providers, okay?
There are no happy campers.
And so, if there are no happy campers?
No.
Okay. So, if there are no happy campers, then it just seems to me that maybe, uh, we all need to come together and say, "Let's, uh, go up the Lansing." Uh, because, you know, the numbers aren't going to change. Okay? The numbers are not going to change.
They're going to get worse.
Until, they're going to get worse. Until we stand up and say, "Hey, guess what? You know, you're- you're killing us."
And this is statewide issue. So, just last week in our PHPCO meeting, um, we were informed by the state that they were going to have a meeting with Milliman, who are the rate setters. They study all the data, and they study the amount of money and things of that nature. And so, there is a meeting that they're planning on inviting all the PHPCOs and other leadership to so that they can look at the rates. So, they can do something with the rates. But it's still, like I said the other day, um, it's a very comprehensive problem. So, we have to take a very multifaceted approach to how we deal with this. So, that's just one thing. And so, there are some other things that we need to do to make sure that our providers remain whole. But it's for us to remain whole too, so we can take care of our people in the community.
True. Okay. So, I don't know where this discussion is going, except maybe that we need to say to everybody, "Hey, we're in this boat together." Um, it's- it depends on how you scream for help when you're drowning.
Yep.
Okay?
If I can add the flyer that Dana mentioned, we are copying it for you. So, it's an infographic created by the Community Mental Health Association. Because of dialogue about, to her point, people be reading determined and putting into different categories. That conversation has been ongoing, and we are collectively having it internally from our perspective, beyond our outreach initiatives. We do have internal staff who are monitoring. It gets a little tricky sometimes if someone's redetermined. The way it shows up, we may not identify, be able to identify it to one or two months later because of the way the information comes in. So, we s- we do have the list that we were giving, given originally by the state. They gave us one list for the whole year, broken down by month. So, um, we also planned, originally, we had sent a provider bulletin to our provider network asking to understand better, encourage them, to have people work- work with the redetermination process. We are going to resend that bulletin again. So, to your point, it, we will continue. But those are some of the things. And Dana's going to, Suzanne was going to copy. Sheila has it. So, this, they did really a nice job explaining the challenge, explaining the cost difference and how people are being put into different categories. And then, this is being shared with the department and with our legislators. So, hopefully, that's helpful.
Thank you. Good. Well, thank you for what you do, and certainly, you know, I- I- I know it's a task. I deal with it every Sunday after church.
Any other questions from my committee? Okay. Cheryl, I have a couple other questions first. Thank you for updating that slide, the revenue, uh, not the revenues, because that is dollars. But the eligibles counts, appreciate it. It's, it was minor. And I noticed that, uh, one that came up was, uh, slightly different than what was on paper anyhow. So, there must have been some, uh, little minor adjustments, which is just fine.
Okay.
Data's, the data's the data. So, it doesn't lie. So, yeah.
Can you remind me what happened with the PA2 revenue? Because I see it was 1.5 million, and it's no longer, um, in our operating fund year-to-date. Sorry, that was in our statement, um, in the board packet. Says page 23, but I don't know if that helps.
I will have to look into that, but I believe the reason was that we moved it to agree to the month that we were anticipating it coming in. So, that it didn't just show across all 12 months.
You're looking at page 24? Twenty, okay, because it's on 24. It's just called Public Act II expenses. So, then we will look at Public Act. It is on, on page 23. It's about a third of the way down. Um, after insurance provider assessment. So, there's got to be revenue up there. It's right at the top, uh, before other revenues, you've got Public Act II revenues. But you are right that it's only showing prior year-to-dates on there.
But that would make sense if you're waiting to add it for a different month.
We wanted it to- to match.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, so, the couple of questions I had is you mentioned that our provider expenses or costs are going up higher than anticipated.
I said they were higher. I didn't say higher than anticipated.
Oh, higher, okay.
Yeah, mhm.
Are they on, are they rising on track to what we expected then? I know we don't have a budget in place, but...
Based on the current budget, they are a little bit higher than what was budgeted, yes.
Do we know why?
That I don't, I can try to find out for you.
Okay. I know it's the policies side. It's the outflow of funds, but, yep. We understand why our revenues are dropping. Now, we just have to see on why are our costs cro- growing. So, um, and I had another question. I don't know if that's one you can ask, answer, or not, but it has to do with, um, the data. We get 834 enrollments. We get 820 payments. So, those are the files that come in from the state. The track number of eligibles track and tells how much our revenues are going to be as well. Does that data carry, does it carry, um, um, uh, person identifiers in it? So, PHI, I hate to call it PHI, but identifiers on, on all those persons and, okay, Nasser's coming up, good. Um, but-
Thank you.
But I know we've been, we've had some concern about DABs, about not, you know, we're missing, we're missing people. Is there any way to look at that data, uh, or does it come with person data so we can compare it to prior months or prior years' data? See who, who's no longer considered a DAB that probably used to be? Because as, as, uh, my fellow board member over here said, you know, once, once you're a DAB, you're probably going to be DAB for life. You're not going to, you're not going to get your blindness. Your blindness isn't going to go away, to put it mildly.
Nasser does, uh, Chief Information Office-
Nasser does, uh, Chief Information Officer. Uh, absolutely, the eight thirty-four and the eight twenty, both of them have identifiers, the Medicaid ID and other, uh, PHI as well, protected health information. Um, and we, we, we do that. Uh, the chart I showed you the other day, it's by funding so- source, the DAB, TANF, Healthy Michigan, uh...
And others.
So, yeah. I, maybe we are losing some of the categorization, as, uh, Ms. Lizambi mentioned. But the dab, a little bit like consistent. The, the big drops are in the other categories. But that doesn't mean we, we don't have some miscategorization as well, definitely.
Right. So the reason I'm asking is, and dab is our big dollar items per person who's a, who comes into Medicaid as a dab. But it doesn't matter whether it's there or they are now listed as now being TANFs, which is my biggest concern, making the swing from one to the other in terms of revenue. Or they're not on there at all. Um, and we're trying to gather this ammunition to take to the state and said, the data is wrong.
We can definitely do that. We can definitely do that.
Right.
See, um, if someone was dab in the past and now after the redetermination they are TANF, absolutely we can track that.
Okay. Or that they're even missing, or they're not, well, I don't know, I don't wanna say missing, because that's... We, right now, the state's hearing all of the CMHs and PHPs anecdotally talk about the data isn't right. But I don't know if they've actually, someone said, well, look at the list. This person's not, this person's now shown as TANF when there should be dabs. This person's Healthy Michigan when they should be dabs. This person's, you know, this person is listed in one and should have been in the other because that's where they were. So the, the, the state needs specifics, so they can't just brush us off to say, well, you just don't understand your, the data coming, or the people in your county. Cause we do. So I'm, I'm just wondering if we can arm ourselves and we can arm the others that are gonna go up to the state and, and advocate on behalf of the persons we all serve. So, that's what I was asking.
Very good idea, and we, we will act upon.
Okay.
Thanks.
Cause data doesn't lie, I think I said that earlier today.
Sure.
Yeah, so, okay, thank you. Um, that brings me to the last question again, it's not really yours Cheryl, but it's sort of... I, I know we have this little infographic from CMHA, but is CMHA or us, can we put something together that has three, four, or five sentences? That is just the message that anyone who's trying to advocate, so whether those are providers, or those are the, uh, the various advocate entities, or the providers, or us, or anyone going up to the state, or person served, go up to the state and can tell a legislator in three, four, or five sentences, simple, here's our message. The revenue's dropped, we need, we need rates increased, whatever that message is. I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm not a writer, so there's no way I would ever wanna be the person writing the message. But we need a clear articulated, short message that everyone can keep using over and over and over till someone hears about it. I know on an earlier call, I, I think I mentioned, well, if they're worried about how they give us rates, why don't they base it on the number of dabs that we have in each county? And give us each, uh, a proper rate, you know? That was just a hypothetical way they could change if they, if the state's not happy with how they give us, you know, uh, how they set rates based on populations. Well, that population, as we've all talked about, shouldn't be dropping that much. It should be relatively stable. So if they wanted to go to persons, if they wanted to go to county people, instead of doing it across the board for dabs, TANFs, and Healthy Michigan, they could go to a, a single population and say, based on that population, Oakland or Care One, One Eighty, or Ottawa, or whomever could, could get fixed, this one fixed rate and let Milliman come up with whatever that new rate should be that way. And then things would be relatively stable every month, whether, whether people are on Medicaid or not. So I'm just wondering if we could do that. And that's sort of not a, really a question, sorry.
And definitely not for me.
Not for you? All right. Thank you. That, that's really all I had on it. Um, thank you so much for sharing the information.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, more questions?
Based, based on, on this, and, and I think we're, talking about maybe having some talking points, a major talking point. Let me add a question, um, one of the more focused areas right now is on mental health. Right? And I, I don't think there's a question out there that people know, like, guess what? There is, and I'm just wondering, uh, because it does impact everything, and, and it's serviced through the Medicaid, if I understand and all of that. When we go to, whoever's going to the state, they're aware of the, uh, issues surrounding mental health. You know, they're working with different groups. I'm just wondering, do, how much emphasis do we take to them? And the talking points, or and the requests to say, hey, this is a, this is a big balloon, this is a big elephant that we have to do. And, and we're not able to, uh, supply the necessary, um, uh, health needs, meet the necessary health needs, and all of that with this shrinking budget. And, and maybe, maybe it's focusing in on that key area, and it's, which sort of touches everything, okay? Uh, so I'm, I'm not sure. You know, what is, what is our focus, you know, on that? Because it, it, it appears to me that, uh, the state is very concerned about mental health. Very concerned about that. So is that where we need to ask more dollars to meet our needs for our contractors or whatever? And all of us together? And I know that may not be, you, you know, what you have to do, you, you work the numbers. Our job is to get the monies to you. But I'm just wondering, is that something we need to focus on and even in the talk tracks? Because it affects our youth, it affects our adults, our seniors, and all of that. I don't know.
Yes, I can't support that. We, we, we need the people in the correct categories. I'm not gonna walk away from two other groups that we serve for one. Right now, the state knows they have a problem based on the numbers. Jonathan's point about using live examples, I think we've gotta get some of that. Uh, you know, everybody that approaches me has had a problem with this, and it takes months to resolve. And the state is saying in May, it's somebody else's problem. So that's why I'm, you know, all, all of the effort's gotta be get people in the right categories, or at least get them in a category and then move them up. Cause the callousness, to be brutally honest, is amazing. And also in fairness to the poor frontline workers from the state, they're short-staffed. Try and put a call in to get something resolved now. Try and do it online. It, the system is badly broken, so we can't pick one winner over the other. They gotta fix the core issue, which is getting people in.
And I think, I think you're right, John, but I just think that all of it is connected. All of it is connected.
It's all connected to a code somewhere in Lansing that if you don't have it, you are without resources. And there, there's no, you know, this, you know, it's gonna take you months to get back in, and in the meantime, you have nothing.
Can I make a one more comment? And I agree with both of you. I think that, um, that's what we've been doing for month after month. Even when this first started back in June, July, we knew it was gonna be a huge problem. And the other things that we are identifying, we're actively advocating, cause this is just not an Oakland County problem, this is statewide. And, uh, we're one of many PHPs trying to figure out, how do we manage the funds we have so we stay out of a deficit, so that we can continue to provide services? So there is a stratification there that says that we're required to provide services for the most severely mentally impaired. And then from there, people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And from there, people in crisis. So there's a stratification that occurs there. And the less funding we have, the less good programs we can do that are nice to do. We have to only, or we're only funded to do the required program. So that's why it's so critical, we advocate every single month. We meet multiple times with the state as a group of PHPs, with the directors from the CMHSPs, um, with CMHA. So there's multiple things going on. We work very closely with our legislative consultant, capital services. We're looking at the county and how we can work together with the county. Because we're asking for additional funds, not just for expansion of programs, so we can fill in some of the gaps, so that we don't lose people when they're going into crisis. We don't wanna have to turn somebody away because they're uninsured. And they have a mild or moderate mental health condition that we can help prevent, hopefully from becoming a person who ends up in the ED or a crisis center. So there's a active advocating going on. But I also think that we have to have, like you said, something quick and easy. I think Mr. Lansman said, something quick and easy that people understand, if I'm hit with this problem, where can I go to help? And our providers do hold some of the responsibility to check, just like we all got a doctor. Every time we show up, they wanna see your driver's license and your insurance card. And we have to continue to check. But we have to do it a little deeper to make sure they're in the right category. So we still have to serve those individuals who we know as dabs, but we're only gonna get paid for them as somebody else, like a TANF, or Healthy Michigan, or whatever other category they fall into. We're still responsible for caring for those individuals.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And to your team for putting this in. I know it's not a one-person army.
No, it's definitely not, and I will pass that along to them. Thank you very much.
Oh.
It's a grimace. It's, it's not a smile, it's a grimace.
Cheryl, don't go yet. Cheryl. The Raymond contract.
No, that's right. So next item up is the, the Raymond consulting contract. Cheryl, you're still here. Good. Please stay.
Busy trying to read without my glasses. Um, we're looking to do an amendment to the contract for the period April first through March thirty-first of next year. We are proposing a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the contract for this year. We also wanted to add thirty thousand to the previous contract because we did exceed the not to exceed amount last year.
Can you explain that a little bit better about the, we exceeded the not to exceed?
Raymond was asked to do additional items over the past year that exceeded what was in the contract for ours, and also to do some additional work. And part of that was due to the issues we have had with staffing in the department.
Okay. So that's, so that's the reason, so is that above and beyond the hundred and ninety? Or is that include the hundred and ninety?
No.
Or is that included in the one ninety?
The one ninety is for the next year.
That we're asking?
The thirty, yes. The thirty is for the year that is ending.
So we're really asking, you're really asking for two hundred and twenty K?
That would be correct.
Okay. Thank you. As I got confused on that.
That wasn't the intent, but I did want to break the two out.
Okay. And that's okay. That's why I was asking.
Yep.
What I did in my email. All right. Is that the end of the presentation on that item? Cause I will ask if, if there's a motion to approve that item. Uh, for recommendation to the board.
Yeah.
So we're approving two twenty? Yes.
Yes.
So I, I would... Yes.
Can we make the motion into separate motions to amend the NTE for the previous contract? And then, uh, additional, the new motion for the one ninety contract for the next fiscal year, for the next year?
We could either do that or make one motion that approves or supports the board's adoption of it for both pieces. Cause this is just a recommendation coming out of the committee.
Okay.
But at the board meeting, we need two separate ones.
Yep.
Yeah. Um, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Okay, is there, are there any other questions? John, you're thinking.
Well, okay, so the, the thirty will go towards finishing up the existing.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Just wanna make sure. Other questions, or were other questions from the rest of the board here? Okay. Um, all those in, given that, all those in favor of the recommendation? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the mo- the recommendation carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list is, uh, an extension with Rosati Schultz. And I'll never get the last two names. Hi, Kalana. You're presenting from remote?
I am.
You have the floor.
Thank you, uh, Kalana Ali, uh, Senior Legal Counsel for OCHN. Right now you have before you, it's a request, um, to actually add funds to the agreement, um, for Rosati Schultz. I know that there was a question regarding the RFP status. The intent is still to RFP the services of this fiscal year. However, given the recent uptick in Medicaid, their hearing and appeal activity we've seen, um, we will need to add additional funds to the agreement to sustain ongoing, um, appeal efforts that are currently in place. Um, they have done, I will say that, uh, they have done a lot of great work for OCHN, and that we've had some great outcomes in recent appeal activity at Medicaid Fair Hearings. And so, uh, we do have some ongoing, um, fair hearings, uh, that are taking place. And so as such, we're asking to add additional, uh, funding to that agreement to cover those costs. I'll take any questions at the ready.
Is there a motion to approve this, and we can have a discussion?
Uh, move to approve.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
So, do you, uh...
Go ahead.
You, you might have answered this already, Kalana, but are these predominantly HR labor relations issues they work on, or is it broader than that?
Um, no, it's actually, as of late, it's been more, uh, Medicaid Fair Hearing. So those things that come through as a result from our member appeals, grievances, things like that, that tend to escalate through the, uh, grievance or appeals process, excuse me, not grievance, appeals process, related to services.
Okay. Thank you.
So we don't have people in-house that handle grievance and appeals? We're going out, out of house for those?
Correct.
Okay. What, I'm gonna ask, but why would we turn to an outside counsel to handle GNA?
Sure. So, um, appeals, they, they have, normally have always been outsourced, but they also take a great amount of time and coordination, uh, with other entities, uh, our provider network that may be involved and interviewed and called upon at those hearings. So, um, it's, it's not just, it would take one person dedicated to, to do that kind of work, given the amount of, um, activity we do have in that area.
Okay. So I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head, I'm trying to wrap my head around this and now think about how payers handle GNA? Cause they, they typically do grievance, sorry, grievance and appeals. They're dealing with it, uh, with, with, with the members or with a provider. But these are just, these are member grievances, not provider grievances and appeals, right?
So let me clarify, these go to an actual ALJ, an administrative law judge, and decisions are issued that impact how we are able to deliver services. So this is not something that is handled in-house with just a member. Um, these things are escalated beyond just the grievance process. This is the Medicaid Fair Hearing process. So this is a formalized process where there are issued decisions.
Okay. So basically, when someone hasn't, when a member has, a person served has an issue, they bring it to... they bring it to us, they bring it to customer service, customer service works it, responds to it back to them. If they're not happy, then they file a GNA, grievance and appeal, or they go to state Medicaid.
If there is a decision...
I hate to take us offline, but if we could, thank you.
Take this offline?
No. Off, I didn't mean to take us off-topic, sorry.
Oh, okay.
So I want to just understand that process as well, sorry.
No, it's okay. Um, so when a person has an issue or they disagree with the decision that is made regarding their services, they can file an appeal. That appeal then escalates if it is appealed, um, at the local level to a Medicaid fair hearing. And from there, that's when you have an ALJ that is the provider who may have been involved in the decision, as well as any administrative staff that may have been involved in any of the review processes.
Okay, so we're representing the OCHN and the provider in this GNA kind of process?
We're representing...
The attorneys are?
We're representing OCHN decision in the process, the decision regarding services, whether or not they were medically necessary.
Okay, and these are on services that didn't either occurred or didn't occur? Or is this for like, um, IDP for the, uh, for the planning process?
This is for services.
Okay, thank you. So I didn't mean to hog the time asking questions. I'm just trying to, I always want to understand what this is going for. Thank you. Are there other questions from folks? Okay. Well, all those in favor of supporting this recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, what else do we have on this? That's it? Okay.
Okay.
So at this point, we conclude our finance part of the committee. Back to you, Cheryl.
Sorry, I did not officially hand it over to you earlier. I totally missed that.
I thought you had, sorry.
No. Okay, uh, just in case anyone entered the meeting late, um, I'd like to remind everyone that we do not have a quorum for our policy committee and our board member attendance today is a little low. So we decided to move the two items under policy management to our board meeting next week, next two, oh, yeah.
Can I just move one of the items to the study session? Mr. Hamilton has an engagement already planned for the general board meeting. And he doesn't need board approval on it. So he would like to present it to the full board at the study session.
That is not allowed, Mr. Hamilton. Yes, of course, that's fine.
Okay, so I'll move one to the general board meeting, plus that will shorten up the time for the general board. And then, um, move the other one to the study session.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we have Suzanne with updates about events and outreach.
Hello. Okay, and my report is long, but I'll be brief. I'm just going to cover a few things. Just want you to be fully aware of all of the great outreach events and activities that we've been involved in. The first one being the community needs assessment, which you're fully aware of. You've heard a lot about it the last couple of months. We are very busy. This is ongoing until the end of the month. We've been, as I mentioned, very busy distributing it far and wide. We've been at approximately 12 different locations, including our clubhouses, our drop-in centers, our, um, substance use disorder residential treatment facilities. I was just at one last week and Christine was just at one today. And they are actually working with their peers to distribute the, both the survey and our flyer and ensure individuals that are coming in are completing the survey. I'll be at two tomorrow at Meridian. So we're really hitting the pavement, trying to get out there and get the surveys out and about. We're also promoting them at our trainings. As you can see, we've got quite a few trainings listed on the outreach efforts. But we are also trying to promote it at our trainings as well as our work groups, visiting the different work groups. I was just at the recipient rights work group, presenting about it. I'll be at CAC this week, presenting and getting individuals to participate as well. So, uh, really working very hard to get it out there. We've got about 350 or so that we received. We still have a few that we need to input because we receive them every day. We put, did our mailing out to the group homes. So we're starting to see a lot of those surveys come in. So we're really very hopeful and very grateful for the number that are coming in. With the traffic that, you know, we are seeing with people coming to our website to do the needs assessment, we, I'm assuming going to see an increase in our website visits as well as potentially calls to our access center. So we continue to monitor that so that we're aware that this is in regards to this, not only this, but also the advertising campaigns that I'm going to be talking about in just a few minutes. So I just want to mention, as I just mentioned, we have a number of trainings that are coming up, uh, that those are listed for you, as well as we hosted the state Veterans Navigator quarterly meeting here last week. So that was a nice, um, addition. As well as a number of community events that we host tables at, those are starting to really pick up. It's spring is in the air, as you can see, it's a beautiful day. So things are starting to pick up and we are always open to participate in those events and, um, present. Next slide, please. Also, as you know, um, we have a quarterly update to the Board of Commissioners and that is coming up, um, this month on the 14th. It's coming up actually this week. And actually, this month, a little change in things. Um, we have our, we're going to do a substance use disorder update and provide some information about the three-year strategic plan for our substance use disorder team. Also wanted to mention the event coming up, the ARC, which is, the ARC of Oakland is doing their annual Dove Award event on Friday. And we actually are honoring one of our own, Vicky Suter. That is mentioned also later in the report. So I just wanted to bring my, your attention to that. We are launching our community threat assessment this week. We're hosting that this week on Friday. Very busy week this week. So we're very, we're looking forward to that. We have a number of legislators who are invited. We have Senator Baer who will be speaking. County Executive will be here to speak. We have the prosecutor's office here, as well as representative from the FBI. So this should be a great event. We're looking forward to it. Next slide, please. Wanted to mention another event we'll be participating in, and that's going to be at the Black Family Wellness Expo, which is going to be held at Welcome Baptist. It's coming up later this month on the 23rd. So looking forward to that. As well as you can see, we've got some other great events that are coming up with the NAMI, NAMI Honors Night. We have a couple of our people on our team who have been nominated for the NAMI honors. So we're looking forward to that event to find out the results of that. As well as we are going to be hosting our autism showcase, provider showcase again. We held the first one last year, so we're hosting it again this year. Looking forward to that as well. Next slide, please. These are the press releases that we have geared up for this month. Obviously, um, I didn't mention our abilities awareness event. I can't believe I forgot to mention that. But our abilities awareness event was last week and it was phenomenal as usual. Ma'Kaya was there with us, so thank you so much for joining us. We had about 50 or 60 people here, some wonderful speakers, um, and a lot of resources as well as our small businesses. So great event as usual. Also, you honored Nancy Helper last month for her 45 years of service. So we are going to put a press release out about that, as well as another recognition is one of our own, Ashley Sampson is, um, the county executive recognizes the county executives 40 under 40. Also wanted you to be aware of some of the advertising outreach that we're doing. You're aware of the SUD advertising campaign we talked about last month. And as well as we're also doing a general campaign. And I'm actually going to be showing you one of our ads at the very end of my presentation. We also like to advertise in various publications. So we'll be doing the Old Detroit publication as well. Also wanted to mention a great opportunity that we had with Crane's Business Detroit. Both Dana and Dr. P were interviewed and we had an article, it's upcoming, so as soon as we have that, we will share that with you. But it's an article and an op-ed that we were able to share our justice initiatives, so related to our CIT and our coresponders. So looking forward to sharing that with you as it comes out. Also, one of our providers, New Horizons, is celebrating their 60-year anniversary and both Adam and Dana were able to do a video message to them to congratulate them. Next slide. I think we've talked a little bit about redetermination. You have the infographic that I mentioned on here. We continue our efforts as well as the efforts I've mentioned previously at the Resource and Crisis Center, where individuals can comment and get assistance with any, um, application efforts that they might need. As well as highlighting our conference use, our conference center here, the usage, which would be Life Skills and Community Housing Network. And then finally, these are our recognitions for this month. As I mentioned previously, Ashley Sampson is recognized as the county execs 40 under 40 class for 2024. Also, our SISAM team was deployed to the Troy Police Department to assist with an incident. And I'm really proud to say that Vicky Suter, our Director of Rights and Advocacy, is being honored at the ARC event that I mentioned earlier. She's going to be receiving the Al Carter Distinguished Service Award this Friday. And we, um, the, we applied for a, and received a MTHHS grant to, we're hosting our veterans event in May, but now we're also able to kind of do a combination and do a SUD community town hall for this event as well. So we've received some funding to do this town hall and bring a speaker in. So we're excited for that. Next, I do want to share with you our, one of our commercials. This is just one, so that you can look for it. This one actually be airing on Channel 7. And we don't have sound. All right, some technical issues. We will put the link for that and there are others. So we can go ahead and put the link on Boardable so that you can see those as they are coming out. So those are actually already started, so you should start seeing them. As you should start seeing a majority of the campaign coming out with billboards and bus ads and radio and television. So that's all I have.
We didn't get the audio, but the picture part looked good. Any questions from board members?
The one that asked, but I noticed coming in that we can't get in, uh, because of the learning center that's been constructed. What exactly is that?
We have two things we're expanding. One is our assessment center, which we currently do the evaluations for ABA therapy, um, for autism. And the other piece is training. So we're expanding our training services and those offices will be used for training as well. So I know Mr. Torres mentioned at one meeting, I think the meeting before last, about using our space. And so this is ways that we're expanding. And we actually want to partner with a, maybe a pediatrician of some sort or some kind of other service provider, so that we can do really a whole wraparound for our young children and families.
I don't...
Did I get that right, Ken?
Um, a couple of things. One, I'm excited about, uh, the activity that's going on. And I have, I have a question that you may not be able to answer. You know, it may be a group question. But I also want to make a compliment, uh, on this Oakland Together Community Conversation Mental Health Services that's going to be out on March the 25th at the County Executive's Office. And I think, um, Christine's going to be speaking at that. So, you know, I'm, I'm pretty excited about that. And also the support that you guys are giving on the 23rd, uh, for that, uh, Black Health event. So thank you very much. Uh, I did receive word that on April the 2nd, April the 2nd at Pontiac High, because of the NFL Draft, um, they, they want to, they're going to have a number of vendors. But one of the things that they wanted to also include, as I mentioned to them, was a moment in health. Because there are a lot of young people that will be there, people will be there, but there are a lot of kids going through mental illnesses and what have you. And so that, that session is like in the evening, I understand, like from 5:00 to about 7:30. And that, uh, we can have a table, we can talk about mental health, we can talk about the other services, because as my fellow partner said, uh, there's more things that we have to deal with too. So that's, uh, that's very, very important. And maybe we could go, go to that, um, or take part, you know, in, in that session. Okay? So I really thank you for that. Now, the question I have is this. Because I think that you, Suzanne, are doing a great job of, of these events and what have you. How does the, uh, our subcontractors, you know, I guess the people that, how do they promote or advertise what they do or are they engaged in that? I had a meeting today and someone asked about CNS and said, what do they do? And honestly, the last time CNS did anything, um, in the city of Pontiac, believe it or not, was seven years ago. Seven years ago. And, and so it's difficult, even, you know, if I look at the dollars they get, I think it was close to 7 million or whatever, blah, blah, blah. But the question has to be, uh, what are the other groups doing to promote themselves even as we promote? And maybe, maybe we need to come together and say, hey, how are we getting all of this word out? I look at the more activities, maybe the more people that would sign up and get registered, the more people get registered, maybe we get, you know, uh, more Medicaid and blah, 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 it all rolls downhill. So, um, that may be something that you can't answer. But maybe it's something that, that we need to look at and say, hey, guys, you know, how do we do something together? I know from solidarity, we're pulling together a lot of things and thank Caitlin, uh, for what she's doing. And maybe that's something we need to target at the meeting. But, uh, the idea that we have, and, and ask yourselves, Easter Seals, we've got, um, CNS, there's, there's something that's going on with United Way, okay? You know, that's out there and, and there's common ground. And right now, people are trying to reach for help and support and what have you. And I'm not sure they're as visible as we think they are visible. So, uh, maybe it's not a question that I was going to answer, but it just keeps coming back. All of a sudden, people give, say, hey, where are these people? And I can't answer it, but, but maybe there's a comment, I don't know. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I can just speak to that really quick. We can work with our contacts, some of the different providers, and make them aware of some of the events that we're going. And we always invite them to our events. For instance, CNS was just at our, we had a number of providers at our, the abilities awareness event. So I think that we can work to engage them a little bit more, let them be more aware of some of the things that we're participating in, and then hopefully they can participate as well. So it might just be awareness, making sure that they're aware of these things are going on.
And I, and I think that, uh, many of us who've been around for a while, um, remember those organizations. But new people do not. You know, that, you know, that's the thing. I was in a meeting with Oakland University, with City of Pontiac and some others, and the question they asked was, where is United Way? Is there a United Way? Right? So, so the question has to be, um, how visible are they? Okay? Because a lot of times, because younger people, newer people, whatever, uh, do not know that they're there. So that's the thing. But on the other piece of the sports event that's sponsored by the, um, Draft NFL, I will keep you all posted because I'll see what role you can play. Yeah, the draft. Yeah, so, you know, hey, you never know, you never know. But anyway, uh, at least I can get you to this thing, because they're going to do a 16-city tour, we'll make sure you're in it, and then I'll try to get you in at the draft.
Thank you, Pastor John. Wonderful school mental health navigators would love to be there. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
And I apologize that the commercial didn't work, but please look for it and then you'll get to hear it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is it time for public comment? Go ahead, come on up. Go ahead, come on up.
Hi, Fred Cummins, lines from Millie, all of Oakland County again. I hadn't planned on this, but given some of the topics this evening. First of all, you talk about CNS. CNS and Easter Seals, as I said earlier, are running CCBHCs, which says, "We open the door to anybody who has a need, and we find them a place." CNS is doing, and Easter Seals are doing that in Oakland County. And everybody in Oakland County ought to know that's where you go when you want something, and it may not be something that you can get from CMH. So call those guys and find out where their CHTHBs are and how you get in touch with them, and tell people. And they ought to be doing that. They ought to be advertising, "Come to us." That's part of the business. They're getting federal money for this, going around you guys. This is federal grants. Now, the other thing is, this, uh, what is it? This Medicaid recertification, or whatever they're calling it. First of all, MDHHS is saving money. The state's saving money on your cost. You need to pay attention to that, because they aren't really that sympathetic. Legislators are looking at the budget and say, "Hey, now we can use it for something else." You got to wake them up. Between Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb Counties, you've got a lot of legislators. It's time for another legislative breakfast, where they all come, or they send a staff person to be there, because this is a crisis, and this is affecting their constituents. And by the way, this is legis, an election year, so pay attention. Uh, I forgot what I was going to say here. Another point is, you need to be talking about real numbers. You need to be talking about who you're serving, regardless of what they're classified, what are they getting? You have people who are supposed to be dealing utilization management. It has to do with, are people getting the right services? Their biggest concern is always, are they getting too much? We got to save money. Well, they got to turn that around, they got to say, "Are they getting everything they need, and what is it costing?" And furthermore, all these providers have budgets for every person they're serving. Get those budgets. What are they paying on every service? You don't have to know the names necessarily. What's everybody getting in terms of budget? And how does that align up with what Medicaid is paying for them? Because Medicaid just gives you a big bunch of money, you say, "Go spend it. Don't worry us, don't worry us about the details. We gave you all that money, you're supposed to have enough to cover it." But you're spending on each person, and that's out of budget. What is it? The providers are either not doing the job, or they're getting the money, and it's just costing you money to provide the services. They're probably saving money already, but they're probably not doing it the right way. They're cutting costs by cutting services. That's what utilization management ought to be looking at, is, what do these people really need, and does it align with what Medicaid is doing? You come with those kinds of real numbers to the state, to legislators, and to the commissioners. You going to talk about the commissioners? This is a crisis in Oakland County. You're going to talk to them? Talk about the crisis. They represent the people.
Thank you for your comments.
All right, thank you. Hope you heard all that, and take it to the other guys.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is board member comments, I believe. Oh, sorry, yes. Are there any online comments? If you wish to speak to public comment online, please raise your hand at this time. No one? Okay. Ms. Newman, would you like to start our board member comments?
Thank you for what I did here. Sorry that it's light on my side of the table, but we will hear the rest of what we should have heard today on next Tuesday. That's all I'll say right now.
I'm going to surprise you all and say nothing. Thank you, everybody did a great job.
All right, since Adam's not here, I'll thank the staff on behalf of Adam, because he always does it every time, and truly thanks for the preparation that goes into this. And also, you know, we, we talk about the providers as distant people, and having two sons in the system and a daughter who has worked periodically in the system. You know, they're on the front line of this, in a bureaucracy from the state. And I know I'm going to get in trouble for slamming the state all the time, but, you know, you're fighting with a computer system that barely works and short-staffed, so, you know, thank you to those folks that are out there all the time, dealing with all kinds of things that, you know, few people want to deal with, but, you know, on behalf of my sons, thank God they do.
Thank you. I got a call from someone earlier this afternoon, and as a result of it, I made a run by the Crisis Center, because they said there were a number of people waiting outside the building with lots of bags of stuff, possessions. So I got there, and that's why I was late getting here. I went by to see what was the current state, and there were a number of bags, I took a picture at least, of a number of bags of possessions of people from people just sitting outside the building. And I wondered what is going on at the Crisis Center. And I don't know, but I wanted to bring it up, because it, I know we have a homeless population, and I don't remember what the politically correct term is to call them, unhomed or something, but I, they're homeless. Unhoused, thank you. And that's bothersome, because there's got to be a way to solve that problem in our county, in the state. I know it's not as obvious in our state as, let's say, go to Illinois or go to Ohio, and we see lots and lots and lots of people under, living under bridges there. I never would like to see that happen here in Oakland County. But again, I'm coming off-topic. What I did see were people in bags with stuff, and I don't know why they were at the Crisis Center and where they were heading after that, because I assume if I drive back there tonight, they're, I'm hoping they aren't there, that they've found a place. But it is bothersome when we, when they're at one of our buildings where they're waiting to see someone we serve or support our, you know, from our network. So I just wanted to bring that up, and I hope that everything goes well for them, whoever they are. As well, I wanted to take a moment and thank Cheryl and her crew for the financials and getting a handle on that stuff, thank you. And the other crew and rest of the staff around OCHN who do a wonderful job, so thank you all. I don't always show my sincerity, but I'm trying to, thank you.
Thank you, and I just want to apologize again for our low attendance today, and that our agenda got a little bit changed up. And also, thanks for your patience while I chaired my first board meeting and just barely survived. Thank you. Okay, this meeting is adjourned.